Okay, this is the September one, two thousand twenty-two planning board meeting. And summer, so. I know a lot of people have things going on outside of this. I do, but anyway, that we have to continue with our business. So. We'll start off with the public comment period. We have a public comment period at the beginning, at the ending of every meeting. You can address for members of the public, anything relating to planning. And you can address it in either the initial public comment period, the end of public comment. And just keep your comments brief. We usually limit it to about a three-minute comment. So try to be succinct and direct as to what you're talking about. And I know there are a couple of items on the agenda that do not have public hearings, so. It would be appropriate if you need to to talk about them at the public comment period. Again, you could either do it. Before the actual application or after the application, but they're not. We don't have any public hearing scheduled tonight. So that being said, I'll open it up to public comments.
Mr. Chair, just FYI, Harry just jumped on the call as well.
Oh, good. Okay.
If anybody has a comment, please raise your hand or use the hand raise function. I have a hand from Carolina as well as from Bob Visnick.
I don't know who should go first.
Well, your name was mentioned first, so why don't you go?
At eighty-one Granite Street, but my property borders. Gold Cove Lane, which I know is under consideration later for the determination of the adequacy of way of way. We had gotten an email as neighbors that Mr. Sims had redrawn his application at this time. And was looking at survey. He has surveyed the lane. And was looking at ways that the lane might be changed. And to be very brief, my question is. I've been told by the town assessor that the lane, Gold Cove Lane is away and that no one owns it. We're all butters. So my question is whether someone who actually doesn't own the property yet. Could make changes to the way and if that ha- if any changes. Made to the way, if that has to be a consensus among the four people that live on this on the street. I'm not sure if this is really falls under your purview or not, but that's my question.
Yeah, I really, I mean, it's a good question, but it's more of a land use question. A property question, not really a zoning or planning question. This is a question about whether someone who. Has may have contractual rights to purchase a property also has the right to to do improvements. In theory, I guess their improvements are being done. At the with the consent of the actual owner, but you know, I wouldn't know that. But that's not a question for the planning board, but it is a good question.
Even though, in fact, they're the goal of this change is to make him. But my understanding is he's withdrawn at this point because he's trying to meet criteria being set up by the planning board.
Look, I have. I haven't heard any reason, anything about why. Anybody's withdrawing. So let's, if you wanted to wait until we get to the, till we hear from them. As to what's going on and why, maybe you'll that maybe that'll answer your question. And you still have this opportunity to raise something at the end of the meeting if you want. Okay. Okay, that's. Obviously, did you want to talk about something other than the application where you're representing the signs?
No, you stated earlier that an appropriate time would be at the public comment before and after, because this wasn't a public hearing, so I just don't want to lose my opportunity.
Oh, no, you're you're you represent the applicant. So, yeah. Opportunity, sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, next item. I talked about this at the last meeting, and I just think it would be good for us to have a formal motion for our to schedule the public hearing. On the. What we hope will be a. A town meeting, a special town meeting sometime this fall for the public to consider. The zoning changes that were. In in what was at the last public. Town meeting zoning changes that were what was Article B. They were all in Article B. And they didn't pass, so we're going to come. We'd like to come back. In this fall to have them reconsidered. We're going to break them up into smaller bites. And also add one. One thing that is actually that wasn't as part of Article B last time, but will be included in the changes, which is the. The water supply overlay district, which you'll hear about tonight a little bit. So I just wanted a formal motion to authorize me as a chairman to move forward. And to prepare a notice. Public notice for the public hearings and for those hearings to be held at six thirty. On October five, which is actually a Wednesday, but we don't want to do this on the same day as our meeting. So. I'm asking for a motion to approve the scheduling of a public hearing. On the various zoning changes for October five at six thirty PM. We've discussed these zoning changes on and off for a long time now, so.
I'll move that question.
Yeah. Let it, Harry.
Yeah, I'll move it.
Okay, sorry. Good. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Seconded by Peter. Roll call vote.
Jason, I have a conflict on that day. I don't know. If we had previously agreed on it, but whatever I had put it on my calendar, so.
Yeah, I think we did talk about that last time. I thought you were okay with that day after, you know, talking about that. I know some other meeting.
I. I actually have a conflict also on the fifth and sixth. I'm just worried when I have a quorum.
Yeah, well, we don't want to have quorum.
Does it matter?
Does it matter whether we have a quorum?
No, for a public hearing.
Yeah, matters. Absolutely, because we're going to be there, so. So let's see.
Later day that week.
What?
You don't want to do it on a Friday, do you?
No, I don't. Friday is not a good day to do anything like.
One day I'm open.
Well, let's let's go back because I thought we had squared this away, but I guess I was. I was wrong on that, so. Let me look at a calendar. Give me one second here. Can I get my calendar up? Here we go. Okay, well, you know, we don't. We don't have a ton of time, so it's got to be twenty-one days before the. The town meeting. So, okay, right now we're talking about the fifth. The sixth is our first Thursday of the month, which is our regular meeting. I don't think it would be a good idea to schedule a public hearing of this size on that day. Seventh is out. So. We're looking at the next. What?
Could we do the third or fourth? On your Tuesday?
Yeah, I think we could do the fourth. Yep. Yeah, because you know.
I have a question.
I just want to let you know, I'm I'm out of the country from the tenth of October to the twenty-fifth. So we've got to do this before I leave. Can't do it after. We won't have enough time. So if you want to change it to the fourth, then we'll do the public hearing on Tuesday. The fourth same time, six thirty. If that's acceptable to everybody, that's that's okay with me.
Jason, is there any real reason why we couldn't have it on Thursday, the sixth? Other than it's our normally scheduled meeting.
Yeah, I tell you, if we have three or four items on, which at that point, we're going to really be jammed up.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
You know.
We haven't had any, so I'm just, you know, you can't anticipate when they're going to come in. I understand.
No, that's the trouble, you know, if I knew a crystal ball, do you have an issue with the fourth?
I I know I do not.
Okay, well, why don't we do this? So why don't we change the motion? Motion to hold a public hearing on the zoning changes for a special meeting, special town meeting this fall. And and that public hearing will be on six thirty on Tuesday, the fourth. Mitch, are you there? I see Mitch's face, but.
I'm here.
Okay, I just want to run this by you before. We resolve on this motion. We would like to schedule a public hearing on the fourth, Tuesday, the fourth. That's is that a Board of Selectment night meeting?
Hang on one second. Let me look.
I thought.
I thought it was Tuesday.
Tuesday. No, that should be an off night. Okay, but even so, we can still arrange a host for you for that. I think we should have capacity that night.
Okay, good. Well, I I wanted to make sure that, you know, if the Board of Selectment, if they, someone wants to participate with it, they're not involved in a meeting of their own, so.
And we don't want to compete with that, people who would want to go to this.
All right, so let's do it. Motion to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, the fourth via Zoom.
I'll move that as amended.
Wouldn't it be safer to do it on the third in case the fourth?
Let's just do it. There's no meeting, so motion to on the fourth, Tuesday, public hearing, seconded. We need a second.
I can.
Seconded by Peter. Okay, roll call vote, Harry.
All right.
Tom.
No.
No?
I'm in favor of the third.
Other than being in favor of the third, you have a reason why you don't want to do it on the fourth?
I have a soft conflict on this on the fourth. I can, if necessary.
Well, it would be necessary, yeah.
I'm I'm not available on Monday, the third.
Okay, that's it then.
God, I feel like. I'm herding cats here, so.
We are.
So are you saying now you're going to still be opposed to it, Tom, or you?
Okay, I'll I'll run in favor if Harry has a conflict on the third.
So Harry voted in favor. Tom votes in favor. Peter?
Hi.
Okay, I'll go in favor. Motion carried. We'll be scheduling the public hearing for that date. I'll be preparing a notice of public hearing for publication. Has to be published two times prior to the meeting, not sooner than, I think, seven days or something, so I'll be working on that. Next week, after this weekend.
Mr. Chair, you have a hair for hand from Bob Disney.
About this? Yeah.
Yes.
You the moderator. Are you talking as a moderator or some other?
I'm talking as the moderator.
Okay.
So the question I have on on all of these, I know the Attorney General is reviewing not this one, but the other ones that passed. But I think that the objection that was raised and for which they've they've sought extra time. Deals with quantum of voting and things that would affect. Be as well, and they've asked until to have until December, the Attorney General to respond to the opposition. And I'm just wondering if you've gotten anything from town council. I haven't heard. On the practicality of voting on these while still waiting from the Attorney General on the others.
I didn't even know. I mean, did.
All news to us.
Meeting the majority versus two thirds.
Well, there were numerous objections. That I think Mitch has the documents that. Some townspeople through Attorney Walsh had lodged, and the Attorney General wanted more time to review them, which I think goes into. After November, so.
Well, the these changes are all two thirds, so they really wouldn't be affected by anything. That they're be reviewing now because all the ones that passed back in May were. You know, we're we're the simple majority.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know if you you might have a different way you would approach them if the others got bounced back, for example.
Uh, no, I don't think so, because I don't, but if they're being bounced back, it's not going to be because of.
And and this is public hearings.
It's just a.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand. I just I just raising that as a question.
Yeah, I don't think the public, I mean, I think I think the public hearing notices and we're conduct were proper and the and the public hearings were proper. And for the others, so. You know, I don't know what's going on with with these, you know, this, I know this attorney, I know he's prolific with his objections about it. And fine, you know, we I think we're fine, so. We'll just go forward, but thanks for letting us know that. I I didn't know that. Okay. So motion carried will set the public hearing for October five and.
Four.
Over four, sorry. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Lander Sims application. For a determination of adequacy of a way on six Gold Cove Lane. You're here. Bob, on behalf of your clients, I see one of your clients is here also, at least. So. Tell us what what's going on with this application.
Okay, yes, I I wrote wrote to you earlier today, Jason, and. Gave you the reasons we were seeking to either withdraw or to get a continuance. And I think the number one thing that's that's troubling us is we need to know the standards that are going to apply to the application. As I said in my email, we we have the procedures and we built our argument around the procedures and around. The physical determinations that we think the the planning board is supposed to make on the actual adequacy of the way. And as you know, there's opposition and they have posited that there is an additional requirement. That that the way had to be. Physically adequate in some way on the date on or before, I guess, the date that zoning came into being in Rockport, July fourteenth, nineteen fifty-one. And I know you mentioned that you were going to talk to town council, and I had asked you. Like yesterday. What the result of that was, because I I want to know the standard if we're supposed to address. The adequacy of this way in nineteen fifty-one, that's going to require some significant. Investigative work and and some briefing, because we strongly disagree with that assertion. But we want to make sure that we brief it to you and we've we've I've talked to. Experts in the field who, of course, disagree with the opposition's assertion, but we want to have the opportunity. To do the legal research and go back in the historical records and show that. Yes, this has been used by the granite company. It was an active industrial site. This was a way. There were other ways. It might have changed through the years, but if that's the standard and it and it's never been the standard in my previous meetings with the planning board. If that's the standard, of course, I think we have the the opportunity to know what that standard is and some time to deal with it. Secondarily, discussion. Turned from the adequacy of the way. At. At the locus in question to the adequacy of the entire length of Gold Cove Lane. And in response to that woman's questions earlier, it's our position that under the derelict fee statute in the cases that apply it. You know, there's ownership of by by the way, by the people that are adjacent to it, but the rights of everybody else to pass and repass and and the rights in our case are deeded. But they include the right to improve those portions of the way. And so based on what was said at the last meeting, we wanted to have the opportunity to see if any of that is is necessary, and I think there's just. Some minor work and we wanted to have the opportunity to have our plan reflect what what the rest of Gold Cove Lane looked like. And so we would be happy not to withdraw if we could get a continuance. And if we could get, you know, a waiver that the present condition requirement might also include. A requirement, you know, between now and and four weeks from now and give us the opportunity to give you a plan. And I and hopefully you you tell me what the standard is, and if we have to go back and give you the the, you know, historical. Views of this property and what was going on back in nineteen fifty-nine or maybe nineteen thirty-seven when it was created, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I I don't I don't understand what you're asking of us. We, you know, we consulted with town council about this application. And what, you know. What the law is. You know, that's kind of our relationship with our council. And and I did advise you early on, Bob, that, look, why don't you address this point? In writing or some other way about the idea that it had to be a traveled way. At in nineteen fifty-one, when the subdivision law came into effect. I don't, unless I miss something, I don't think that we've gotten something from from you on that to.
Well, yeah, and I and I addressed that as well.
You want to do, wait, let me finish. Do you want to do that? Is that what you're saying? You want more time to do that?
Where what I guess I'm hopeful is that you would provide us with the standard because that, in my view, is different than what your procedure says you're looking for.
Well, no, it's not different. No, it's not different at all. I mean, this is, you know, this is. This is not new law as far as I know, but what's in the law for A and R. Or a determination of a. Of a travel way, there, you know, certain criteria. And on all this is about is to avoid the idea that you've got to, you know, basically do us, you know, do a division road that you. You know, it's like, okay, we're going to use the existing road because it's been there since, you know, whenever, and we're going to use that as our travel way, too. The alternative is, wait, hold on. The alternative, I guess, would be to, you know, do. Basically do a one-lot subdivision or something. I'm just, you know, I'm don't. I'm not saying this is definitive, but I'm just kind of thinking out loud here. What you want to know is, okay, we've got this road. We've already filed one application. And it was and withdrawn. And now we file another one with some improvements made. And now we find out you want to withdraw it again, and now you're saying, well, let us know what the standard is. I want to know from you. I want to know from you what you think the standard is, not.
Well, sure, I can tell you that.
Well, I don't want to just be told. I think, you know, I want something that says this is the law. And then if it's if it disagrees with town council or what we think, then it's going to go to town council and say, hey, you know, Amy, what? Look at this and, you know, why are they saying this? That's the way it works is like. We want to know what you guys do. We want to give you the opportunity to tell us what you think the appropriate law is. We're not like, we're not the. The judge, the overs, you know, the overseer. We just want to know what your what your position is. As you know, this other lawyer for Ms. Howe said for her clients, what her position is. You have, you've had that memo and, you know, do you, is yours different? If yours isn't different, then, well, you know, then if you agree with her, then that's the standard, I guess. I, you know.
Let me know when I.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, I mean, your regulations provide, and I quote, "The board's decision shall be based on the conditions." That exist at the time the way street determination is requested. And they're saying that it should be different, and so.
That's in addition to, I think, the idea that how long this has to exist, that's number one. What the condition is of it now, obviously, I think that what you're talking about is when you guys came in with the first application. What you were telling us is, well, this is what we want to make it look like when we're done. And but that isn't what it looked like when you filed your application, but that isn't. Except.
Right, that's that.
Wait a second, that doesn't exclude. Thinking about, well, was this, okay, was this a traveled way? In nineteen fifty-one, when the subdivision law was adopted, that. So those are two are not two mutually exclusive concepts, you know, the fact, what does it look like now? And has it been in existence in one form or another? Another is a travel wave since nineteen fifty-one, so that's. That's what, and that's the question that I put to you. Do you agree with what? Ms. Howe says that it had to be in existence as a travel way since nineteen fifty-one or not?
And you say. I disagree with, I disagree with what she says.
Yeah, okay, I I get you disagree with it, but I think as, you know, as lawyer to lawyer, we need more than just you saying you disagree with them, like what?
Well. Why? I I cited cases in in the last presentation, and you told me that materials had to be in a week prior to. And we're getting submissions from them the day of the hearing, which.
Either way, their submission that that we just got, I told her, that's. You know, too, too late.
So I, yes, if if if. You want us to brief the issue, we would love to do that. We would love the opportunity to do that, what what I believe her. Her previous brief miscited every case that she she cited. I'd like to have the opportunity to brief it. And I will be away on the fourteenth, so we're requesting a month to do so.
Yeah, I mean, look, so, okay, this changes things, and you're not really, you don't really want, what you really want to do is have more time to address what. What the Ms. Howe has in her in her papers.
And and secondarily, we. We'd like the opportunity to present an upgraded plan because the emphasis seems to be more on the beginning of Gold Cove Lane, so the the surveyor has done the work.
Yeah, I I don't know about this beginning of Gold Cove Lane. I don't know what, I mean, the Gold Cove Lane's there. It's got houses on it.
That's correct.
What are? What's supposed to happen? I understand. It's it's already in existence.
That's right. Our position is exactly what you just said, that it's it's in existence. It shouldn't be relevant to this discussion. And but if it is, we would like the opportunity to to show what it looks like on a plan. So that we can defend that.
You want to submit an updated plan or a supplemental plan or something like that for a different part of the road?
Yes.
Okay, look. I I'm fine with that. I think the board is fine with that. If this is, you know, this is your nickel, so to speak, you're the one who wants, you know, wants this approval and, you know, withdrawing it. To just refile it for the third time doesn't make a lot of sense. So unless you're going to, you know, unless your plan changes materially.
No, and and that's.
Yeah.
That's my my email to you today.
Yeah, so look. You the 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 regulations say we should, we need to make a decision within sixty days. If that may not happen now. But as long as you're willing to waive that, if necessary, then we're fine.
We are willing to waive that.
Okay, then, you know. I don't know how anybody could object to. To more submissions. If you want to take. Three months to, you know, as long as your submissions are timely in relation to the meeting. Then go ahead, but we want to hear. From all sides, and we want to be able to consult with our attorney. With all the arguments that everyone has and and discuss it with her. You know, that's what I, that's what I, I don't know if anybody else on the board has a different view, but. I'd rather do that than than make a decision. That may be wrong. Down the road. On the way. Yeah, I mean, let's let's see what you guys have to say, but you're saying you're not going to be around Bob for a while.
On the fourteenth, I've I've, of course, had to work through several family vacations this summer, but we have another one for that for that week right after town meeting.
Under understood, no problem. I just want to make you aware I am gone, and I'm mentioning this already from the fifth of October to. The twenty-fifth. So. We can. Resolve this before that, then it'll have probably be, you know, later.
I believe that that's fine from our perspective.
Okay. Anybody else have any other thoughts on this? Thoughts on this?
Sorry.
No, okay. So what are we? Okay, today's the first, so our our next meeting in September. Is going to be the third Thursday of September. Can we? Can we have something from you, you know, with enough time in advance of that, like a week before? So we.
And that's town meeting is the twelfth. My wedding anniversary is the thirteenth, so I'm trying to take the fifteenth off, so if we can go to the. Allow us to submit by the twenty-second for them. When is your meeting? Is your meeting the twenty-second?
Let's see, our meeting is today, meeting would be the fifteenth, which is the third Thursday in the month. And then we don't have another meeting until. October sixth.
But he's not there.
Be here for that meeting or the one on the twentieth. So, you know, so then we're looking, we're going into November. At least for me being there.
And I will, I will look at the Hollywood Square that is my client, and he'll give me a thumbs up or thumbs up. That's fine.
Or for what?
For a November meeting.
Okay, as long as, as long as we're all on the same page about that. You know.
So that would be November.
Third.
Third, with a submission due a week before.
Correct.
All right, since we're going to. Since this this application is not being withdrawn. We need a vote. Correct to table it.
A vote on what? No, it's just. No, it's not table. It's just. The applicant's request. The application is being postponed. And the applicant has just stated that he's waiving the sixty-day. Requirement in the regulations that under which the application needs to be decided. If you weren't waiving that, then that would be a problem. Yeah, we're 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 just basically. Yeah, saying that we're not going to hear anything more about this.
Where is it?
Vacation until our. November meeting, is that correct? Anybody?
Yes, from my perspective.
Yeah, and and are you gonna change anything about the site between now and then?
My enders has a question.
You're not meeting.
Oh, hello, am I here?
Yep.
All right, sorry. So the only I wanted to clarify, will we do sixty days from that eleven-three date? Or? Just want to make sure we're all on the same sheet of music, or if it, or we're just open ending this, and then. We are looking at the way next week with our engineer, so I I don't know what the plan is with the way. Prior to the try-ons lot.
So what's the question?
Somebody asked if there was going to be work in the way, I think.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, so. We have to, we're trying to make sure that it meets your regulation because if there was at least a member of the public, and I think one member of the board last time asked us. To see if the way from Granite Street to. The lot or the locus. Met the same standards of the regulation.
Someone on our board asked that question?
No, 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 no.
No.
Okay, I think so. No. Well, actually, I wonder about that. I I drove it today, and my little short wheelbase car had, I was getting around those. Little kinks and it's horrible sight of line coming, line of sight coming out of there.
I don't think we're having a hearing right now.
Yeah, we're not, we're not talking about it. We're just trying to get.
So dumb. So, all right.
Okay.
So my only question was the sixty-day, making sure that we all understood what, if we're going to just pick a new date, and I think eleven, I'm I'm fine with eleven-three being the new date, if we're going to call that kind of our. New start if.
Well, well, what I hope is that by eleven-three. We will have all the materials from. You know, a week before, we'll have all the materials from you folks that we need to have. To ultimately make a decision. That there won't be kind of like dribs and drabs coming in after that day.
Yes.
But that would help a lot.
Well, that's what we were trying to avoid by either doing the withdrawal or the continuance, is we just haven't had enough time.
I understand. I mean, you want to call it a continuance, fine, but I always think of a continuance in the, you know, in a more formal sense, like you've got a.
Postponement?
Or something, but we're we're not.
That's, I think we're all.
I think we are. Okay, very good. So we'll get your, whatever you're going to submit, we'll get it a week before the the meeting on the third.
Right.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you do have a hand from Meredith Fine.
Okay. Yeah, but.
Do you want to wait for the end?
Yeah, why don't you wait? Thank you. Okay, is that anything more on this? Okay, we'll move to. Michael Caffrey, is that, is the applicant here on that? Are this? Six South Street, okay, not here, wasn't here the last time. We're just going to take it off the agenda and. We'll put it back on if we get a request, you know, at some point later. We'll just keep on carrying it along. All right, the next item is the. The revised water supply overlay protection district. First of all, is Eric Hutchins in the audience?
Eric is not, but Ashley DeRozers is.
Okay, well, I've been dealing with Eric, so.
I know Ashley is also on that subcommittee, so she might be able to speak to.
Okay, well, let me just give a little history of this. So. Everyone understands what we're doing here. You know. This was the water supply. Overlay Protection District was worked on before my time. I think Eric Hutchins was the. Was the chairman of the planning board at the time. And in the context of reviewing the. The zoning for the, you know, the changes that were made in May. One of the things that the planning board, we we redid and I I kind of rewrote it. With the help of the D E D P W, I'm sorry, the E E P. A person who's their water, well-water person. Catherine Xenus, I forget what her last name is, but. Anyway. It was rewritten. It was. It was immensely complicated the way it was written. There were inconsistencies. In the provisions between the zoning and the. Water Supply Overlay Protection District provisions. And also it allowed the zoning board of appeals to actually alter. The boundary of the Water Supply Overlay Protection District, which according to the D E P. They are legally not entitled to do, that it would have to actually go back to town meeting and also. Back to the D E P. So. A lot of these changes were made in a draft. We did not bring it to the town meeting. In May of last, this last May, because there were just too much stuff. And I know Eric Hutchins had. Some thoughts about things that he wanted to put into this, since he was your, he and his board were the original authors. I really deferred to him on this because it's, you know, it's somewhat technical and. But what I can say is what what we did. That the revisions we made were shown to the D E P. The D E P reviewed them and the D E P said, yeah, your revisions are consistent with our regulations. And you can go forward. So. That was a good start. There are some additional revisions that have been made. And I actually have a map here, which I think I can. Get up. Put it on. So, Ashley, do you want to start talking about this? If Eric, I know Eric was trying to be on this call, but apparently he was not, so.
Hi, Jason. Yes, thank you. So Eric. Is unavailable this evening. I will say that Diane Cartwright and I from the Ad Hoc Water Committee have been supporting Eric. And we were here this evening to to listen and hear the conversation, and then we can go back to Eric and respond as a subcommittee to any questions.
Okay, so you're not really going to make a presentation.
That was not the plan tonight. We're happy to do so at a subsequent.
Thought Eric, you know, that's what I was hoping that he'd do, but.
Okay.
He's not available to do that, then I don't really see. You know, I'm not prepared to go into this. I I was going to let him to do it, let him do it. I think he and I discussed it last week. We had a meeting. And it was. It was fine. So, you know, we, everything was good. So, anyway.
Okay, so Jason will communicate that back to Eric. I I think you said when your next meeting is, is this something you'd like to carry over to the next meeting's agenda then?
Uh, yeah, we probably carry this over to our next meeting. Yeah. But this will be a part of. I I think. This will be part of what we put up for the public hearing on the fourth. This will be part of it.
Yes.
People will be able to read it and and ask questions about it, and Eric hopefully will be there on the fourth. To answer those questions, too. I mean, I know he did a lot of work on the original one. He has very, I think, admirably recognized the deficiencies in. The original one that is now part of the. The law of the bylaw, the zoning bylaw. He knows that it needs further work. And this has been a great collaboration. That I've had with him on this and, you know, we're all, we're all in agreement, I mean. So that's where we are. Yeah, so let's carry this over. So we're moving right along here. Okay. You've got one thing that's postponed, one thing that's going to be withdrawn, and. Now we're. This will be to the next meetings, so. Item six is member items. Is anybody, this is for the planning board members. Does anybody have any thing they want to bring before the board?
I can report on the North Shore Task Force meeting of M S P C. There were a couple of items of interest. Generally, I'm not sure they fall under our purview. Of this planning board, but this is supposed to be. The meeting of the planning folks from different municipalities. One one item was that there's a North Shore Water Management Task Force. Associated with Senator Tar, and that's the only information I have about that. The other item was that there is a. Interest in Gloucester about being a part of the community first program, which is sort of an enhanced mass save program for. Energy and I guess water conservation, too. So. If you're interested in any of that stuff, that would be a bit of a step out from what we normally do. One other thing, at the. Meeting of the Board of Appeals last night, they are short on secretarial help, which sounds familiar for minutes for us. And one solution they're looking at is to share. Someone with the. Historic. Commission.
Preservation Commission?
Start District Commission, I forget their exact title, but. They they think they can share a person and make that above the threshold where the. Person can get benefits and therefore be a more attractive. Draw for hiring someone, so.
That's not something that's in the cards.
Okay.
That's your answer there. That was pretty quick.
Yeah. Even if we're interested, we can't do it, but I thought if if it were, I'd bring it up.
We're we're hiring individual meeting support clerks, but we're not in a position to add a health benefits. Position.
Okay.
Yeah, we obviously, I know Mitch is aware of the fact that. You know, we haven't had minutes in a while and. Because the people who are doing them are no longer with the town. So, yeah, anybody who could. Any replacement to that would be appreciated because. I mean, God for Zoom in a way, because we've got. At least we've got a recording of the meetings. If we don't have the minutes, but it sure would help to have the minutes.
Yep, if folks are interested in applying for a support clerk position, they should just contact the H R director. We have five of those that town meeting funded, so. Looking to get people for it.
Okay. All right, anybody else, any other member items? The comments. Meredith Fine, you wanted to. Address, I'm assuming, the Gold Cove Lane matter.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I just have three, three points or questions, if I may. Can we clarify whether work is, work can proceed on the road? Um.
What?
Can we clarify whether work, whether work can proceed on the road?
Oh, I mean. Can't, I mean, that's the, that was, the question was asked earlier, wasn't it?
Um, it was. I I didn't, I wasn't sure that the answer was definitive.
Well, the answer was, number one, we don't, that's out of our, the planning board doesn't determine whether. Work should be, is appropriate or not. At at a particular time, we don't have, we're not privy to the legal. Arrangements. That the various people have. On along the road. We we don't. Have the ability to tell. Any, you know, the the signs is. Don't do the work on the road. We're not an enforcement. Board, we don't. That's the building inspector. That's the enforcement arm of the town. If someone's doing something that's not allowed. In the town, the place to go would be to go to the building inspector, not to the planning board.
Understood. Just want to make sure that everybody's clear there. Any work he does there is at his own risk.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Just want to be clear that any work that he does there is at his own risk.
Well.
Yeah. Um, number two. When Mr. Visnick submits his brief. Are we going to have the opportunity to respond to that? Like, we have, we have to submit something within forty-eight hours of your meeting.
Yeah, that's, and then that's, he's going to do it with a week before the meeting.
Right.
So you'll have.
So that gives us, that gives us some period of days to respond.
Yeah, you know, you'll have it. He's got to do it seven days before, and you've got to do it. Two days before, so the answer is yes.
Thank you. And my last question is, has the town council actually submitted an opinion to the board?
Well, that's like me asking, did you submit an opinion to your clients?
Well, I don't think it's a violation of attorney-client privilege to say whether it's actually been submitted.
No, I mean, we, yeah, we've talked about it. We've had communications with town council about about this, sure. You know.
Um, but you don't feel comfortable sharing what her opinion is?
No, I I I don't want to at this time. I want to see what. What Mr. Visnick's position is, and then I can. Give it to to council, and then we can decide among ourselves what we want to do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, we also have a hand from Toby Arsenian.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Toby Arsenian. Ninety-five Granite Street. You were hoping to go into the watershed protection overlay district. Is that something that will be brought to the October town meeting? I thought that was one of the things that were put off for later consideration. Which is it?
No, we're not. There's no, there's no zoning matter on the October town meeting. Agenda. So this, this would be November. Or even December, possibly. But not, not, not October.
Uh, not another town meeting, put off till another town meeting. Is that correct?
Well, what, it could be a special town meeting, correct?
For the watershed protection standalone.
No, no, that wouldn't be alone. There wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a. To have a whole town meeting for that doesn't make sense. It would be part of. The proposed changes that. Were what were considered in as Article B at the last town meeting in in May. This would be a, an add-on to that.
I see, at a later time.
At the same time, at the same time. They would be considered, all be considered at the same time.
I see, and and whatever changes you would have in prospect would be on file at the town clerk's office, how long before the meeting?
Well, we've got, if we're having a public hearing on October fifth. Then the changes should be on file, you know, several, as soon as the notice of public hearing is published.
I see. I see.
Notice says, you know, they're on file. Yeah.
I don't know what you've come up with it, with Eric Hutchins, but both the watershed protection overlay district, the zoning and the coded bylaws, which the government and bylaw committee have been working on, deal with town reservoirs and permitted and non-permitted uses of. And you need to get both of those out and look at them, you know, back and forth from one to the other to see what's covered, what's not covered, falling between the cracks and possible conflicts, possible repetitions. Some things belong in one place and some belong in another. It makes a difference.
Yeah, no, you know, we'll, we'll be doing that.
Good enough.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
We have a hand from Laura Kozicek.
Okay.
Hi, thank you very much for taking my question. I wondered, Chairman Shaw, are you going to be having the plans and revisions available to the public before your next meeting on the revisions for the water overlay district?
Yeah, I mean, we already have a draft map that shows the, the revised districts. And we have the draft bylaw. So yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there anybody else?
Nope, that's it.
All righty. So it's now seven twenty-five. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? So moved. Motion to adjourn by Tom, second.
Second.
Seconded by Peter. Roll call vote, Peter. Harry.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
I'll vote in favor, meeting adjourned at seven twenty-five. Thank you, folks. See you next time.